I'd like to say good afternoon and welcome to the CMSD budget public hearing. Today is June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, it is six o'clock. And this meeting has been officially called to order. We do have a core members present this evening, we have Mr. Sparks, Dr. Schumay, Mr. Spears, Mrs. Young, and myself, Ivana Cox. I'd like for us to, number two, would be invocation and the pledge. Dr. Schumay will offer the invocation.
Pray with me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, have mercy on us, we are sinners. You are always more ready to hear than we are to pray and to give more than we either desire or deserve. Mercifully receive the prayers of your servants who call upon you and grant that we may... ...abilities and of the trust which the community has placed in us. Grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change those things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Set us free to serve with love and compassion. Give us the grace to put away ourselves and purify our intentions that we may be fit for your service through Jesus Christ your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Ghost, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Please God, please stand. Pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the Lord, holy and sacred, and to the revolting religious sects, whining, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three is the adoption of our agenda, policy BBB, policy BCBD. Requesting a motion to adopt. Motion has been made by Mr. Sparks, seconded by Mr. Spears. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. The agenda has been adopted. Number four, the proposal for FY twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two budget presentation. Mrs. Holly Rogers.
Good evening, Board.
Evening.
Community members, thank you for attending. This is our public budget hearing for the FY twenty-two proposed budget. Today is June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. I'm Holly Rogers, the business manager here at the Columbus Municipal School District, and I do thank you for coming tonight. For the beginning of our agenda, we're going to talk about the revenues for our project, our revenue projections with ad valorem operations requests, our expenditure budget projections, and the debt service with ad valorem debt request. Jason, can we change the bottom of that and we'll just head it off a little bit? I don't know if I can fix that. Please bear with me. I want to make sure you guys can see everything I'm talking about. I'm not sure where the, where this is coming from, I did not set it up to do this. For general information, we've got a projected staff for next year, five hundred and ninety employees. We're serving three thousand three hundred and fourteen students from pre-kindergarten all the way to twelfth grade. Our average student teacher ratio is twenty-five to one per class for elementary locations, and up to a hundred and fifty to one per day for Columbus Middle School and Columbus High School locations. Our total projected revenue is fifty-four billion, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirty-six cents. Local sources, state sources, federal sources, and sixteen section sources are the categories we use to show our revenue. Our local sources is showing an increase this year of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars from the original approved budget from last year. Our state sources is eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars more. Federal sources is eight million, eight hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars more. And sixteen section sources were showing a decrease of five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. This is just showing you the percentage of what makes up our revenue. Local revenue makes up twenty-five percent of our revenue budget. For state is thirty-three percent, federal is forty-two percent, and sixteen section is less than one percent of our revenue. For local sources, this is ad valorem tax collections, child nutrition sales, and other local revenues such as activity funds. We're writing this budget with, right now, the most we could possibly ask for, and that's going to be an increase of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. For child nutrition sales, we're only showing eleven thousand, nine hundred more. And other local revenues is down by one hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Did I whisper this thing really hard, or?
No, point already, point that means.
Again, this is just showing the percentage. Ad valorem taxes make up ninety-eight percent of our local resources. Child nutrition is one percent, and other is two percent. For ad valorem operational base determination, we're allowed to look at the last three years of collections. The total base determination I'm actually going with is the FY nineteen twenty collections, at ten million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents, with a four percent increase. The first slide that you just saw just shows what the one percent increase would do. This, this slide right here shows the difference between what we're seeing this year compared to what it was last year. The four percent increase would add four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-three cents, which would make our total request up six hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and four cents. For our state revenue sources, we have MAEP, which is showing an increase this year due to the teacher pay raise, educational enhancement, homestead exemption is a little down, vocational education is really close, and other state revenues is up. For our total state revenue, it's eighteen million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Again, this is showing it broken up by percentage. Our MAEP makes up ninety-one percent of our state revenue. Educational enhancement makes up one percent, and homestead makes up two. Our MAEP funding trend kind of goes hand in hand with our enrollment trend, which has been going down since two thousand seventeen. Again, this is showing our enrollment trend. We were at three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight students in two thousand seventeen, and we're currently at three thousand, three hundred and fourteen students estimated to attend in two thousand twenty-two. For our federal revenue sources, we are estimating twenty-two million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. It's made up of child nutrition, Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDEA Part B in preschool, and other federal revenues. Our total revenue for federal sources is up eight point eight billion dollars, and that is due to the CARES funds and S R funds being added on to next year's budget. Again, we don't have S R three allocations yet, so we did not include that in this, in this current budget. Again, this is showing percentages. Child nutrition makes up fourteen percent. Title I makes up eighteen percent, Title II is three, Title IV is one percent, and other, which is cut off, is fifty-seven percent this year. Of course, normally that's a lot smaller, but again, with S R being included in it, it's fifty-seven percent. Our current projected expenditures for FY twenty-two is fifty-four million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents, and we have sixty-three funds budgeted for the next full year. It's broken down into numerous sections, instructions, support services, non-instructional services, sixteen section, facilities construction, and debt service. Overall, it's five million, six hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars more than it was last year. And I'm trying to go back, just so you can see the percentage breakout. Instructions, forty percent, support services is thirty-six percent, non-instructional is six percent, sixteen section is less than one percent, facilities construction is thirteen percent, and debt service is five percent. We have numerous programs that are considered instructional expenditures for the Columbus Municipal School District, totaling twenty-one million, eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We have elementary schools, a middle school, a high school. We have a vocational education and gifted locations. We have special education and alternative schools. We also have private placement, the detention center, and private school programs. English learners, extended day and extended year programs, student clothes, clubs, and athletic activities. Jason, what did I do? Our support services is going to be anything that would support our instructional program. We have student support services such as counselors, nurses, psychologists, and pathologists. We have our curriculum and professional development, librarians, administration, business operations, maintenance, transportation, and central support. This makes up nineteen million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars in our expenditure budget. Our non-instructional expenditures are three million, ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. This is going to incorporate our child nutrition locations and our district wide parental involvement. Our sixteen section expenditures is for the repaired upkeep of our sixteen section property. Our facilities construction is seven million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This is for our Hunt building facility and any kind of building upgrades or any kind of construction that we're doing with our S R funds for this year. All upgrades, repairs, or maintenance will be in effort to prepare, prevent, or respond to the pandemic. For our debt service expenditures of two million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, this includes our district lease payments, our QSCAB, and our general obligation bonds. Our total debt service is one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars less than last year. For our district capital lease payments, we still have here four of our Apple MacBooks and our Masterbus lease purchase. In all, our district lease payments are going to be two hundred, two thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Our ad valorem debt request for QSCAB is going to be our quality school construction bond. It was originally issued in two thousand and ten for three million dollars. The payment will have this year, interest and principal, minus the pledge that we have for E E F buildings and buses, is going to be three hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. The request will have for our general obligation bond, two thousand and nine series, is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. It was originally issued in two thousand and nine for nine point nine million, and our interest, principal, and dues and fees payment will be sufficient to make our payment at three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. I'm sorry, our request of that amount will be sufficient to make our payment. For our general obligation, two thousand and seventeen series, our payment will be one million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. It was originally issued in two thousand and seventeen for eight point two million. The interest payment and principal payment plus our dues and fees request of one point, or one million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars will be sufficient to make our debt payment. This is our total ad valorem debt request that will be presented to the Board in the next month to show what our requests will be for debt service. We have a breakdown of the three mil note, which is considered our QSCAB note, and I'll have each bond written out separate, so you can see which is two thousand and nine and two thousand and seventeen. And our total ad valorem debt request will be two million, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents. Balance in the proposed budget. Currently, this budget is written with the district going into a reserve of our fund balance, and one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars at the closing of FY twenty-two. This may fluctuate throughout the year according to realized revenue and expenditures. Again, this budget was written showing the most we could possibly request, and this is with the numbers we currently have, and this is using last year's numbers of the nineteen twenty school year collections. That is the presentation, are there any questions?
The Board? Board members, anyone have any?
Just, when will we know M A E P money, isn't that an estimate?
M A E P isn't there, no ma'am.
I'm sorry?
M A E P was, it's one of our revenue figures, it's included.
Right, but I thought that was an estimate, I didn't realize.
No, it's a realized figure. Last year, it was an estimate, we proceeded very, very late in the year.
I misunderstood.
And one of the reasons M A E P looks so much larger this year than last year is because last year, we were going on an estimate.
Somehow I fell asleep at the switch on that one, okay, thanks.
You're welcome. But at the same time, we do have the correct figures for M A E P, but the allocated amounts for the federal programs, are they in?
They were not in when this was written. But again, our federal programs is going to, it's going to wash each other out. I, I report the revenue that will wash with expenditures. So it's not going to impact our fund balance the way the district maintenance is going to impact our fund balance. Okay, are there any questions from anyone in the audience or the Board? That is our proposed budget for the FY twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd really like to thank you for the hard work that you've done in pulling together the budget work sessions that we've been having with the Board members to bring us to this point, so that we are basically looking, and we already are aware of your figures and everything that you've been working with. Thank you so very much for your work, Ms. Rogers.
If the Board doesn't mind, it's something I'd like for us to do on a yearly basis as we're writing the budget.
It's the work session, thank you, I appreciate it.
As long as you don't mind, I'm taking up a whole lot of time, you're doing that.
Yes, it will, it will help us a great deal, I appreciate it. At this time, we'll move to item, item five, Columbus Municipal School District, FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget pub, public forum. Do we have anyone that's signed in? Well, we have no one that's signed in, but, so we'll move on to the next item. And moving on, we'll look at item number five, CMSD twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Oh, sorry, I'm repeating myself. Number six, the capital improvement project update. Mr. Little, how you doing?
How's everyone doing today?
Good, how are you?
Doing fine, doing fine.
Love that you sound.
Happens that way sometimes. I was asked to go over what was left on the capital improvement list and kind of come up with a number, an estimated number of what it might cost to finish these projects. Upon doing that, what I did is I called around to people and just kind of got ballpark figures. When I could not do that, I would just think in my head of past jobs that we've had, look back at, and kind of estimate what, between what those jobs may have cost and what inflation and everything, what it is, so. But starting out on that, do, do y'all want me to, do y'all have this, y'all have this before y'all, everything?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get a hard copy. My printer wasn't working, so I don't have a hard copy of it, but I can't see it.
Okay.
Does everyone have a hard copy? Okay, if you're waiting long, you should give us a hard copy. Thank you. Mr. Little, you can go on and continue, I can't see it here.
She has my paper. She has my paper. Well, I can't, the first page that you have, that is the shortlist. That are the jobs that have already, we have POs for them. Most of those jobs, they've already started, some of them halfway completed. The one, I think it was number nine, the Wonderwoods. We have, they have completed that job as since I made this list. We've got the invoice, it's already over here to be paid. That is what is outstanding on what has been bid and awarded. That's the first page. But you can scratch off Wonderwoods, which is I think number nine.
So the, I'm trying to see. So the smart security, can you give us a little update on where we are with that?
On smart security, the high school is probably ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent wired already. They started at McKellar Saturday morning to do, McKellar will take, will not take long to have it wired. They have started, they had one pallet of speakers come in, so now that everything is wired to each classroom, they're starting to go and put speakers in as they, the ceiling mount, I think, haven't made, but the wall mount have. The projection on that should be probably within the next month. Is, I spoke with her the other day, she said it would probably be somewhere around this morning, but they should be completing that job, barring the big, the big ass.
Remind me what Kendall Company is doing at the high school?
The, the stage curtains.
I'm sorry?
The stage curtains.
Of course, thank you.
We have got the, everything is picked out, the colors and all that. They came back and did a remeasure, just to make sure they had everything correct. And that ought to be any day now.
For the ones of us like myself, could you just go down that list and just give us a little quickie, like a United hysteria? Because when you said that just then, I said, oh, okay, that's what that is.
Okay, on the, United. On the United exterior, it's athletic complex, that is for the bleachers, pressure washing of the bleachers and the concrete areas that are not fenced in under the bleachers. The Cook Development at the athletic complex is for our press box. Got up there and got to look around at it, it was in desperate need of roofers league. We had several major problems in there, so that's what that was for. Kendall Company, of course, is the stage curtains. Parker Robinson, the Joe Cook Auditorium, they're about eighty percent finished with that, that's repainting the ceiling, the front walls, the two rooms as you come in. They're probably about eighty, eighty-five percent complete with that. The Columbus High School, the Parker Robinson, that is the painting of G Hall where they do all their testing. Those rooms were real dark colored. We wanted to lighten it up because that's where they, you know, they're testing every year in there, so we put a brighter color in there. That is painting every room on G Hall at the test and then the choir room will be painted it and then the hallway down there where you're going towards the band hall is in pretty bad shape, so we're gonna be painting that off, so that's what that is for. For smart security is the intercom system at the high school in McKellar. The other United exterior services is for the pressure washing of the concrete around the middle school, the sidewalks, everything there. Cook Development, that is going to be the painting of the east, south and the west side when we get the woodwork completed, which is Jay Morgan down there at the bottom, they'll be doing the woodwork. We're waiting on the, came in, I don't know if y'all have looked at it or not, but they've cut out several pieces because this, the wood is in a certain way and it's gotta be that way when we put it back, so they're having that wood specially made. Once they complete, then Cook Development will come in and paint over what they have. Quality painting at the athletic complex, that is for the baseball, the dugouts, the press box and the concession stand.
Mr. Little, so Cook Development at Franklin, tell me what they're doing in?
They will be doing the painting of the building once the wood has, the rotten wood has been replaced.
I'm sorry, you just told us that. I mean, Wonder Works, I apologize.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, because I said mark that. That is for the playground at Franklin.
Oh, okay. Wonder Works is the playground equipment.
Right, they got that installed at Franklin and the one at Sale. It's already been marked off the list.
Okay.
Any more questions on those? The rest of these, like I say, these numbers are estimates of pretty much mine and other contractors that I called to try to, to try to get some prices so we would kind of have an idea of what we're looking at. Some may be a little high, some may be a little low, so don't hold me to the fire on them.
So question, the P A system and the gym, oh, I remember you telling us that it's gone, is it, or it's just bad?
In the auditorium?
In auditorium.
Joe Cook?
I'm sorry, at the high school.
At the high school. It still works, but is, it's distorted, it's, it's in, it needs to be replaced. It's in bad shape, but it does still work. And what I based that off of was, like Joe Cook, I think I, someone had said that they had had a, had someone come through and their estimate, just as a punch number, was a hundred thousand. If it was gonna be that much for Joe Cook, I know it'll be that much for a gymnasium because it's gonna include a lot more than auditorium would. So I say, these numbers may be a little high, they may be a little low, they're just kind of shooting some of them.
You have a question, Mr. Stevens?
No ma'am.
Where are we on the lights for the football field?
In the last meeting, I turned in two bids. They were, the scope of work on both of them were the same. But I think the problem that I heard is one guy itemized his and the other guy didn't. So I was told that it wasn't apples for apples, so we're not anywhere on that. I called the guy that did not itemize his and I've asked him for an itemized statement or bid and I have not received that yet.
Are there any other companies we could look at for a bid?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm probably gonna have to rebid the whole thing again because the bids that I got for that, they're over thirty days old now. So I'm, it's, it's gonna have to be rebidding again probably. Unless I'm, unless I can call both of them and they both agree to stand by their bid. But most bids are only good for thirty, maybe thirty to forty-five days.
And then sometimes they might just re-ins state them again, you know, if you call them, they may.
Sometimes they will, they'll just, like I had one today, I called in and told him his quote was old and I asked him if he's still screwed with that number and he did, so we went forward with the project.
Okay. Is their quote, did it expire because, why?
Of days.
The date, all right, the thirty days and the time the board met or what?
By the time I had gotten them and then from the process of when the board met last and me waiting on this other guy to give me his itemized quote, it's been over thirty days since I got the quotes. And plus, what they'll do is they'll go back and look also at the price of wire and if the price of wire goes up, you know, their, their prices will go up.
We seem to have a, I don't know, a challenge on getting responses in a timely manner, which makes more work for you because you have to go and ask again since thirty days have passed. Is there, is there anything, I mean, is there any way to hold people's feet to the fire or, I mean, it just seems ridiculous. We've, we've been trying to get this wire thing done for quite a while and we seem to, either they don't turn in the bids the way they're supposed to be, so we, it looks like it's apple to oranges instead of apples to apples and then you ask and you don't get a response. I mean, it must be very frustrating for you.
It is, but the, I can't stop them from changing their price because the price of everything goes up every day.
No, I understand that, it's just when you have a no response and when they fill it out to start off with incorrectly, we have to have, you know, two comparable bids. If I remember correctly, there was a huge, there was a big difference between the two, which is why you needed that itemized one to find out if we get the same work. I just throw it out there. I mean, I know, I know you're doing what you can, it just seems, it's just very frustrating, I know.
Can I ask a question? Replacing what Dr. Schumak just said. And remind me if there is purchasing law attached to this, but is there any way that while you're doing the capital improvements, is there a set amount that when you get these bids, all right, over a certain amount, you have to bring it to the board? But under this certain amount where levels off, you do not have to bring everything like this to the board before, like if you get your quotes, if you get your quotes and we may meet the next month, twenty-eight more days from that day or whatever, and then, you know, before you get it rolling again, that quote is expired. There, there has to be some other kind of way that we can do this in maneuvering these capital improvement plans, so by the time you get your quotes, you're able to have them to just go on and do the job? If you select the one, like if you get three quotes, you're gonna select yourself, you and Miss Holly, the quotes that's appropriate?
Right. That, that is what I've been doing on most of them, but it was my understanding on that quote to, because you know, we had talked at one time about whether we were gonna do the full replacement of everything or if we were just gonna wire. We had had that discussion.
Yeah, we talked for it.
So it was my understanding that we had to bring it back here for that because that was gonna be my recommendation of not rewire, not replacing all the lights, the recommendations, because we didn't know which way, we were kind of, which way were we gonna go? And it was gonna be my recommendation to just rewire the poles and that's why I sent that one last month here as a recommendation of, that was my opinion and my recommendation of what I thought we should do with the lights right now.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the amount that is and, and I was wondering, you know, if you could have just moved forward with it.
Well, I don't, I don't think it was the amount. I think it was, we were kind of debating on which way we were gonna go.
Which way we were actually moving.
So that was my recommendation that we went with just rewiring the poles from the lights all the way down. And then I think the problem of one being itemized and one not is why a decision wasn't made.
Do you have any other?
Yes, I have a question. Do we have a template of sort that we share with these companies that are submitting bids, that way they know what we expect and what we want on the bid?
Well, what I do is I go meet with each one of them and we sit down and we talk about the scope of work of what we're doing, but most of our bids that come in are not itemized.
They're not, okay.
And why he chose to itemize his this, this time, I have no idea, but I think that was the discrepancy.
And that's what the bribe, that's what the question comes in.
I mean, ninety-five percent of the time, he just gives me a number. And then I compare that number with the scope of work of the other person that quotes against him. And normally, we're pretty close, but this time, I don't know what to.
And that's what caused for the board to call it into question is because you had one that was itemized and one that was done as busy as usual.
Right.
So now we're waiting again?
Right.
And then even you don't get the itemized.
I'm calling someone else.
Say again?
I'm calling someone else tomorrow.
You drive it away.
Yeah, I got, I got to move on. I'm gonna give him one more opportunity to give me an itemized.
All right, so.
Because this, this job needs to be done.
Yes, yes, very well said. Appreciate it.
I'll see what I can come up with.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Little, when we get a walk-through, we had mentioned several of the buildings that need pressure washing, like the sides, the fronts, and I know, of course, Franklin had been pressure washed due to, you know, having the bicentennial. Where are we on the other buildings and things of that nature?
As far as the sidewalks that have been, Sale has been completed, Fairview has been completed. I have the bid for the high school. I've gotta have, I've got two guys, I'm waiting on get bids for Stokes Beard on that one. It has not been run yet. Union Academy has been completed, Franklin has been completed. That's where we're at now. What we have left is the middle school and the high school and Stokes Beard.
What about Cook?
I apologize, Cook has been completed.
Okay. Well, there were like some, some areas on the side of the buildings, were we not gonna address any of those?
Right now, as far as what I had on the list was sidewalks. So that's what I, that's what I'm pretty much looking at right now.
For pressure washing?
I think we did discuss the building and sales because there were several of the buildings that were, I have to go back and look, but.
I just, I'm, and if there's something I missed, I apologize, but I thought that I just saw sidewalks.
For pressure washing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way possible we can, or, add pressure washing the side? Now, I, I've noticed the middle school side.
Yeah, I looked at it today. It, the whole building needs it over there.
Yeah, Joe Cook, the front of it, the, down on the end by the auditorium, the front of the high school, there were several.
Now, on the high school bid, what I did is the front awning, right there when you walk in, they're gonna pressure wash it. The one around the side by the cafeteria, the paint's coming off of it, so I told them go ahead and blow the paint off of it so they can get it, because while they're pressure washing out there, might as well hit it and then the awning on the west side, that was dirty, so they're gonna go ahead and pressure wash it.
You have a lot to do. A lot to do.
We definitely would like to interest all of the buildings and how they look.
Overall appearance of the buildings. And, you know, not to exclude the building where we are.
Well, I had that one quoted and the guy called me the other day and, and pulled his quote back. He said he's got so much that it's probably gonna be several more months before he could even think about coming over here, so we canceled that P O and put it back on the list. So I said this one, this one to be pressure washed also, but.
Is there any way you can get anybody else to pressure wash it?
Oh, yeah, it's gonna happen.
Oh, okay, yeah. So for pressure washing?
This just happened like the day before yesterday.
Okay. So we are looking at pressure washing central office?
Yes, ma'am.
What about, the, and I know we have so much, I mean, I hate to bring this up, but the, the dry, the, you know, it's pretty, it's getting pretty dangerous out there for ladies that wear heels.
Out here?
Yes, sir, I'm a heel wearer.
I'll have it looked at too. It, and I think I saw a piece of the curb needed.
Yes, the, you know, the curb sides, the drive, you know, and then you, you think about it, I'm not just talking about for myself, I said that just to take the attention off anybody else, but when we have people that are continuously coming into our school district and when they come to the central office area and they're parking, you know, people, people are nitpicking and they pay attention to basically their surroundings and first impressions is what, is how you perceive, your first impression of, of where you're, the building that you're entering in says a lot for the quality of what's coming out of the building. We're on the same page, aren't we?
We're there.
Ask a quick question specifically here at central office. The flag pole out front, does, is it lit? I mean, does it have spotlights shining?
I do not think it has a spotlight.
Because I know obviously the formality of raising it lower or leaving the flag up is that you're only supposed to leave it up if you're supposed to have light on it.
Right.
And since I know we rarely seem to have a flag out front for some reason, I'm just curious if maybe we could put a flag up and have lights wired in where we wouldn't have to take it down unless it's tattered to be replaced, because, correct me if I'm wrong, that is the proper way.
Right, it, it is. If you're gonna fly flag at night, it's gotta have.
It's just having to take it up and down and not having the flag up at all, it would make sense to me that if we could do a small little wiring job, put some spotlights on it and then leave the flag up, that itself, I think, would probably be a reasonable thing to do.
Most of our schools have that. We've gone around and made sure those lights work, but I do not believe we have a light out here, but I'll check into it.
And you know, a part of the capital improvement was that we were buying, purchasing the flags, the state flags, was it?
We had, as, I didn't know if it was on this, I know some of the schools were on here, but we had a guy come around, we researched back to who we bought flags from the last time that we bought them. He actually came around and sent us a kind of a write-up on our flag poles, the size that we really should be flying on, the way that pole is conditioned. So I can get that, but we just got it just a while back and what we got was quotes on a new American flag and then the state flag to fly underneath it, so we would have both flags on each pole. We do have some poles that are bent. Uh we do have some poles that are bent, uh possibly need to be replaced. Uh they're uh, according to him, I have not really gone out yet and looked at what he actually wrote down on there. I get that write-up and I, I'll email it so everyone can see it.
I don't think we even have one here since it's.
That was another thing we had looked at, is that, at each one of them replacing the American flag and having a state flag on every state that's.
Alright, thank you.
It's all in a, a write-up bill and I just gotta give it out and I'll send it to y'all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Just walk me, if you wouldn't mind, through next steps. I see that some of these things on the capital improvement estimation have out for bid.
Okay.
And some of them, and most of them don't, so what, what in, in your plans, the next step for getting more of these, you know, small things? Or smallish things?
Okay, let's just, let's just start at the top of C H S, if you want to, we'll go through that.
Okay.
The, the sheds and the bleachers, the number I have there is a correct number. He just has not sent me the uh, the quote shed, that is what he stated to me it was gonna cost. Uh the student walk from Caldwell to McKeller, when we got to looking at that, it was a lot worse than we'd ever thought it was. The center part is not that bad, because both ends at the McKeller end and at this end. And he was, he was estimating that is gonna be pretty close to what that is gonna cost. So that's, he's working on that right now, he just said, I said, I just need a number. He was something close, so that's what he gave me there. Uh the tree green space, that's out there by the, by the cafeteria. And what I did is I just kind of went through some books I had and found tables. And that's where, they were about sixteen hundred dollars a table, and then you see with the lights. Uh as far as the light part goes, that one, that's not the hard part, it's just, just the man over there getting the life back to it. So he looked at it. Uh P A system at the gym, I've got a call in to the guy that set up for uh Franklin bicentennial. He does this kind of work and we just gotta get together on that. Uh but at the football stadium, the one I have getting a quote, that's the artificial turf where the football players stand on both sides, as y'all remember, that's just torn all up. That guy is actually coming Friday to look at it, to measure it, uh to give me a price on what it's gonna cost for redo. Home and visitor's side. Uh football parking lot atop Kevin Stafford, uh it is out for bid. Uh I think it went out for bid on the twenty-fourth and you'll be hearing from us as that gets opened up.
And that's true, I have a quick question, I apologize.
Okay.
For C H S on the backside, um that area in the parking lot that needed repairing, is that, have we, we completed that?
Concrete?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, it has been completed.
Okay, great, thank you. And the lighting on that side?
Has been completed.
So it'd be fully lit when the students come out of the back gym, the back door?
Fully lit.
Okay, thank you.
Uh all the way around the back, what I do is we rented a lift and we just kept it for two weeks. And we just started and we went from there to McKeller, fixed all the lights out front there. Then went to the middle school, worked on all of those lights. Just, I rode around at night, every light I didn't see, I put tape on it.
Okay.
We went to it and got it.
Thanks for you, I'm happy to see you on my.
And even the, the underside of the west where all those were lined up, we took all those down because there was a broke wire somewhere underground and we accidentally rewired in three more lights. Four foot fluorescent lights underneath the, the whole part of the, the west half office right over there.
Okay.
So it, it's lit up here over there now.
Wow.
Thank you.
This is great, thank you, your reporting, total reporting is great. I really appreciate it, we really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
If you're on the list of, would you have any? Okay, now, excuse me. Do you want to? Okay.
Uh pretty much, the next one that I have, I got question marks about is over at Fairview. Uh I've got a guy that's gonna come in and look at it, because we're gonna take part of that ceiling out just, that's the stain on the windows, just to see what it is. I did not put a price on that because I don't know what we're gonna get into. Uh we're just gonna have to pull out some sections and shine a light in there so we'll have.
Wow.
Uh sealed up real good right now, because I got a new crowbar on to add a few minutes and this, it's got a lot of nails in it. So I stopped him wanting something else, uh but that's gonna be one of the next things that in the very near future that we start getting, getting to look at. Uh of course, we've got some handicap ramps, um at Fairview that we're gonna be looking at. And on the concrete basketball court we talked about in the playground, I just kind of figured maybe a twenty by twenty, thirty by thirty pad and just with the cost of the concrete, that's kind of estimated price I can.
Let me ask a quick question, is that about the same size as the one that's on the uh Cook playground? Because they have basketball.
I'm not really sure.
On the back side.
The one on the Cook playground is probably a lot bigger than that, but it's got several, I think it has four basketball goals.
It does.
This at Fairview is just one goal sitting out there by itself.
Okay.
And once I got out there and kind of marked it off, I was gonna look whether we needed probably a twenty by twenty or if we need a thirty, you know, kind of get a better idea of uh what size would exactly need, so they'd have enough room to play.
Okay, no additional questions, we'd like to thank you very much.
Okay.
For all of your hard work, uh you and your team, thank you so much. And you can, you carefully explain everything so patiently, we really appreciate it.
Alright.
I, I have, I'm sorry, I have one question.
Okay, student, you're on.
Um repair the sprinkler system at the middle school.
Yeah, I spoke with Will Span, uh he's the one that has our contract over there right now. And I told him yesterday, he kind of walked around out there, because as of right now, it does not work. He said that would be not counting wiring and the controllers. Um if you, if you really go around that school, I think there's a lot of uh sprinkler system that's not needed. On the backside of the hallways, all of their sprinklers, all the way back there where those magnolia trees are. I think if we were gonna think about redoing that, he also stated we probably need to tear everything we have out of our bushes and start over. Because everything we have there is, a lot of it's just covering.
You think it'll stop working?
Yeah, we're not sure, it's, it's been off since I've been here. Because we, we looked at trying to figure out what was wrong with it at one time. And I talked with some of the guys that have been here a lot longer than me and it was probably off before they even came here. So it probably hasn't worked in the last five or six years.
So I guess my question is, is it really necessary?
If we're not gonna revamp everything that we have in our, uh in the front and everything there, according to his professional opinion, no, it's not needed. But if someone, if we redo everything and get it looking real good and we do not fix the sprinkler system, or we put new bushes, somebody's gotta water it every day. Uh and what we have, it doesn't need water. Yeah, a lot of it, we, we, I'm sorry, we pulled a lot of it out, this died. And we started, we started trying to replace some, uh but it's, it sustains on its own.
Wow.
Maybe that was very, very good.
So we're gonna change it out to Sephora's and Rock?
Yeah, yeah. Put on.
Future conversation.
Right. And like I say, that's, all of these were just numbers that were pulled out, they're not hard numbers. Uh they could go up or they could come down. Kind of, kind of use an idea.
You know, the only, the only other thing I see on here is, is to replace an HVAC unit at Franklin. And while I know it's on this list, would that not still, I know some capital improvement, would that be covered under the S R fund?
It will, I just, it was on the list and I didn't wanna pass anything, so I just, if it was on the list, I stuck it on there.
Sure, and I guess that's one thing I wanna make sure that is, is clearly identified as we move through these projects, that this isn't gonna be, this isn't gonna be expensed against Fund eleven twenty-one, this is actually gonna be money that can be taken from another pool because I know is, we're being mindful of what projects we still have to allocate the funds to and the last thing you wanna look at, say, oh, this is gonna cost X and then it not be something that would be hit against that account. And then, of course, you know, something as large as a P A system, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, and I'm, I'm no sound engineer, so I'm not gonna make any statement about it, but that would be in the scale where we would have to actually get through a bid process, right?
Well, we wound up on that, uh we actually had some quotes on it when I first started here. Uh we had some guys come in and what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to, if somebody can write a scope for them, for that, that knows what they're talking about. And we had one guy that said we needed ten speakers, one guy that said we needed eight speakers. We never could get everybody together, uh and then finally one guy said, well, if you're not gonna do it my way, I'm out. So that's where we kind of went with that. And the prices on that were just barely under this right here that they were giving us. And it just kind of, kind of went away.
I think, I, you know, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, you know, certainly the system that you would need has to actually align itself with what you're gonna use it for. I mean, you don't wanna have an over, you know, you don't wanna have this huge Cadillac of a system when you, when you, when you don't need it.
That's why.
And I guess that's, that's my thing, is if you're gonna do a performance every twice a year and you're gonna have meetings that say, you know, I'm gonna use a Cook for example there, you need something that you can hear that doesn't like cut out, that type of thing versus, I mean, if we were putting on theatrical performances every single week, then that system may need to be a lot more refined and different for that, to meet that need. And so when I seen the hundred thousand dollars, I was thinking, well, I, I understand you'll need some J B L, you know, Bluetooth speakers hanging all over the place, but at the same time, like, that just seemed like, wow, I mean, like, that's.
Well, that was just someone who came through and just kind of looked at it and just said, if I was gonna do it, of course, if I was gonna do it, it doesn't mean much. That's why I was saying these numbers could be high, it could be low. But for something like it, for it to sound good, we really need to get someone that does that as a business or either, somebody that can come in and go, hey, you got this much square footage, this is what you need, you need this acoustic for this, you're gonna have this bouncing off the wall here, so you need to, because I have no idea.
So this is at the gym, correct? This is the gym, is this the gym area?
For the gym and.
The gym and, and the auditorium, like I said, that was just a price to be given there.
I did a walkthrough with A V, uh with an A V guy, like, last week.
There we go.
It can be, and we might get it on uh S R three or something. I talked to Dr. Dito about it, because we use that, we can uh justify that as social distancing because it's our largest auditorium, we used it for the parent meeting, we use it for all of our parent meetings, we used it for the uh discussion about going to year round school. Um but it's about a hundred thousand dollars, you gotta, you have to rip out. It apparently has eight up front, four aside, four aside. It's, it's like twenty-four audio inputs. So if you were just to even replace what they have, they have twenty-four different audio inputs, including the eight stage ones and then eight different hookups up front, um yeah, about a hundred thousand dollars. You gotta, you gotta get a whole new sample, rip up all the wires, whole nine yards. And the guy I talked to with it, um I was talking about putting a camera in the back, because again, we're gonna use it for all of these, you know, parent teacher meeting, or not parents, sorry, the, the meetings for parents and stuff like that, we might as well set it up for stuff like that. I, the way I see it, it's an end all, or a catch-all auditorium where we can do a lot of stuff. But I agree with you, yeah, if we're just gonna do it for one or two plays, then yeah, it, but even if you're just replacing what you have there right now, a hundred thousand dollars, easy.
You know, years ago, it used to be used for a lot more than that. And I think if we have that auditorium up to par where it is uh usable, because at one time there were like, uh our children, our students, kids, they had uh, uh would come from Cook having the largest auditorium, I believe. They had the, I'm trying to think of the, the name of the plays, but it used to be a little play maybe an hour or two and as an en- enrichment for our children, that was um, excuse me, something in here. Uh for, it was an enrichment for our kids. Uh as a teacher, I uh, my kids loved going to the little plays and they were always at Cook, at, in that auditorium. Uh also, there were like award programs and things like that in that auditorium. Uh there were different, uh the gifted programs would have things in there. And you know, if we have students that are gifted at all the different schools at some time, when our programs are beginning to come back alive, then I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to use Cook Auditorium to the full extent other than um, other than just for uh parent meetings sometimes. And it, it is good, you have stakeholder meetings there, you have parent meetings, but it could be used for a variety of, of uh activities for our district if we have it so that it's usable to that extent. So we, I don't think we should limit what we are, just, just make, don't limit uh what we're looking at doing uh because of what we are, the place where we are right now. But I hope and pray that two, three, four, or five years from now, we're gonna be using the Cook Auditorium for a lot of other um things. Think, think about it, our schools are magnet schools. And we've been talking about each school stands for something specific, a different type of expertise that would uh, that could uh bring about a creative dream for children, for future, for their future lives. So these are, there's so many different ways that we could use, uh I believe, our auditorium. That is the largest auditorium in the district, yeah, okay. That's what I always thought.
Did her Franklin larger.
So is that auditorium, you said, this is the auditorium and the gym?
They, they both need to be updated.
Oh, okay.
So it was, when I looked at the auditorium or had heard, you know, that they'd gone through and looked at it and they were thinking a hundred thousand, I was thinking it was probably gonna be close to that on the other one, that's why I just threw an estimated number out there on that.
Okay, can, can I ask you one question about the gym real quick? Excuse me.
Sure, sure, sure.
Uh the uh, it just came to me when you said gym, in the gymnasium, as a part of uh the pressure washing, I don't know if it's pressure washing of what, that happens in the gymnasium, but um, you know, when you're sitting there on the bleachers, uh is there, what is that called when you have that cleaning? The, the walkways to it?
They're come, they're, they're actually, we already have the P O for Huntington to come in and they're gonna refinish the floor.
That's it.
You know, we have to change the emblem in the middle of the floor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh so we have that, that will be done. I think they have it scheduled for uh, I think we've got it scheduled for like two, three days after school starts is the first opportunity they can be here. So that whole floor will be sanded down, refinished, a new emblem put in the middle. And I think it's gonna have a couple of emblems on the side that are a little bit smaller and all fresh paint and everything, so.
Okay, and the little seating area too, where everyone sits, cuz I noticed when I was there last, those little rails.
I have to look at the rails.
Yeah, check them out.
I hadn't grabbed no one, yes. But that'll be, that'll be coming in August and we actually had a group in there today that fixed every single light, so when you walk in, they're gonna have shades on. It's bright, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just to pick up on something that Mr. Fickers was asking about, um and I'm sure you've already done this, but just let me ask it anyway. With S R money, have we done a systematic look at all our HVAC systems in case there were ones that need to be replaced that we can use S R money for?
Yes, I have walked the bill. Yes. I have walked the buildings, uh, on the roofs and I've got them written down in my office which ones that, you know, you may have one compressor running in one night and it's, it's an old unit, it's not worth putting the big money to. I have, I have gone to every school, um, and written down all the old units and I've got with my HVAC guy and the ones that have given us a lot of problems, a little bits and pieces and they're old and I have all that jotted down, so.
Good, well, let's not just repay, replace bits and pieces, let's, I mean, this is our big opportunity.
Turn loose on it, we'll, we'll get it.
Okay. And when you get turned loose on it, I'm sure every other school district in the state is thinking about it, so.
That's another thing, it's, it's gonna be like a back order tonight.
Yeah, that's okay, just so we get the order now, thank you.
Man back there said, we're gonna get it good as snow. Anything else?
I just, uh, one other thing, and I know that, uh, I believe it's in one of your presentation, maybe Dr. Black's, about the heating and cooling in the auditorium at Franklin, in that auditorium. But I know when we did our walkthrough, we walked in and looked around in the auditorium, what, last October? And was just curious, cause I know you'd made the comment the other day about using sixteen section money on sixteen section property. Is there any way we can kind of get an idea as to how that auditorium looks, if it needs to be freshened up in any way? Uh, not malt bald or anything like that, to go in and give it a good cleaning, to get it up to usable standards?
It right now, uh.
Cause I know there was that ticket booth area out there that something apparently, uh, had been left behind for some time with aroma.
Yeah, that's cleaned out.
Okay.
Nothing in the ticket booth right now.
Okay.
And I've laid the word down not to put anything else in there.
Right.
Uh, the walls, uh, kind of up high, you can tell where the plaster was kind of let loose in several places. Um, some of the, the seating up in the balcony has been taken apart to, that's why the balcony is closed off, been taken apart to fix the seating in the, in the bottom because it's hard to find, this is in the past over the years, because I walked up there, I guess it's probably a couple of weeks ago, look around. Uh, but that kind of stuff needs to be, you can tell on the walls where some of the plaster has started letting loose. The paint is kind of peeling back. Um, it could, it could use some updating, some, some fixing up. Uh, like light lenses, some, you know, they get a hard yellow look, you know.
So, so I guess, you know, I know this is something we look at, it's not something that's just fresh out, out of left field or something, but is there some way you can give an assessment of everything from the stage, hey, you know, it's all scuffed up, it needs to be, you know, make sand and restain all the way up to the balcony? And say, hey, you know, okay, we can use these seats for replacements down below, but to re- put new seats all up here? Or just something, whatever you think, that it could be a usable space, because I mean, it's there at the original site of the first school and it's a great auditorium with the way it was built back in the day. It just needs to really be, uh, freshened up. And we have, what, sixty thousand or so in sixteen section dollars now? I have to look at the fund balance or something, fifty, sixty, something like that.
I think it's like fifty-six.
So, I mean, that's another amount of money that we could look at deploying if the board chose to to try to get that up to use so the students there downtown use for it or something, so.
Sure.
You can kind of think of it, Franklin's auditorium was used for those same type things that I mentioned earlier. It was both of them. It was Franklin's auditorium too. Wow, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so very much.
I'm all in.
Moving right along. Now with item seven, consideration and a discussion to approve human resources personnel agenda, the personnel staff items. I need a motion for approval of our staff items. So the motion has been made by Mr. Sparks requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Item eight, wow, item eight. This has been a good one. Uh, item eight, requesting a motion to a adjourn, adjournment.
The move.
The motion has been made by Mr. Spears, second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion?
No, no.
No discussion, yay, all in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you all so very much, meeting is adjourned.